I don't know, I can say afternoon now.
Location of the grid.
Good afternoon, I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this eighth day of October 2020. Please rise if you're able and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman?
Here.
Councilwoman Lobstad?
Here.
Councilman Mortel?
Here.
Councilman Bouvier?
Here.
Councilman Skivoni?
Here.
All right, so we're all here. Thank you, this is actually our third meeting already today. We had the Water District meeting, we had a special meeting, and now we're going to have a work session. And the primary purpose of this work session will be to go over the draft agenda for the meeting next Tuesday, October 13th. And we can also do some updates or anything else that the Board feels they need to cover during the work session. So without further ado, we'll go right to the draft agenda. There's one extra resolution.
Two.
Two? I only have one.
Is there a red folder?
I have only one in that red folder.
John, could you give him your copy, please?
I got, Rick has, we're going to share one too. We'll be, we'll be okay, so we'll, we'll take those up when we get there.
And then this.
That one I have. Okay, so this is the agenda for next Tuesday. It's a one o'clock meeting here, you know, afternoon meeting. We'll have it here at Town Board. The public is welcome to attend. We have limited seating capacity, so it's best if you're planning on coming to let us know so we can reserve a seat for you. The meeting is viewable on CTV, Channel 22, it's viewable online through live streaming. And we will make every accommodation necessary so that you can be heard at these meetings. It just helps if you let us know so we can, you know, arrange for that. All right. There is one public hearing scheduled. It's a public hearing to accept a grant of a conservation easement from Big Sky LLC. It's for property to be maintained as open space located at North Sea pursuant to Southampton Town Code 244-4 and 247, general municipal law of the state of New York. So that's it for public hearings. We'll go through the resolutions. We do this so if any Board members have questions, we can try to get answers now or we can catch any mistakes before Sunday publishes the official agenda. All right, so the first one is 7/31 of 2020, changes the target area of parcel and amends the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan. This is that former IGHL piece that's being considered for indoor aquatic facility. And I forget where we are with this, but...
The CAC had their meeting.
They did, so the record is the public hea—did we close the public?
Yes.
We did.
But left the written record open for three weeks, which ends...
This day.
This day, 13th, not this day, the 13th, yeah.
The day of this.
How did, so they had the meeting. How did, how did it go?
It was, Star did a great presentation. I think that the CAC was very glad that they did.
Okay.
I appreciate the...
Was there much opposition or some questions or concerns?
I mean, some, yeah, there definitely were some people who were mostly concerns about traffic, some more vociferous than others.
Okay.
But they, I did, before the meeting was over, I did ask them to please, if they have, if they want to comment, the written comment period is open, please send a letter.
You know, and it, should the Board decide to allow this use, which I don't even know if we needed to even go through this process because I think it was allowable on the original authorization, there'll still, as Councilman Skivoni brought up, there'll still be public opportunities if, if this group is able to secure, secure the funding. You know, be, you know, the design, the size, scale, you know, mitigation, all that stuff, traffic studies, it's all, will be for public review at a, at a later date.
I personally...
And we talked about that as well.
I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping they are able to secure that kind of funding because it would be great to have an indoor pool facility in this portion, you know, sort of centrally located in the town, so. But, you know, we'll cross that bridge, I guess, when we get there, or swim across it. All right. All right. Any questions about that? Okay. Rick, you're next.
Town Board Resolution 34918, authorize parking lot paving at Long Beach using the Suffolk County contract with Rosemar Contracting Incorporated.
Town Board Resolution...
Got a lot of use this summer, so probably needs to be repaved. I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
All set?
Yep.
Town Board Resolution ID 34917, authorize parking lot pavement patch in Lot 24, Jackson Avenue, using Suffolk County contract with Rosemar Contracting Incorporated.
Town Board Resolution ID number 34889, authorize professional services agreement for network upgrade and authorize purchase of associated hardware from CCSI Incorporated and SHI Incorporated. Town Board Resolution 34850, authorize purchase of computers using Sourcewell contract.
Town Board Resolution 34900, authorize the purchase of guide rails furnished and installed from Suffolk County contract.
In that, I was reading through this, the guide, the guard rail, oh, guide rails, I guess that is one word? The guard rail is...
They're guider rails.
There's guide rails and guard rails, and I don't know the difference.
I don't know the next sentence.
Where's it going? It's highway. Probably a guard rail, I wouldn't think.
I would say leave it alone.
Next one?
Yeah, just reading it. It's probably, it's probably okay. 34865, authorize purchase of one 2021 Chevy Tahoe LS four-wheel drive from New York State OGS contract with Joe Basil or Basil Chevrolet, Inc. 34942, authorizes the supervisor to sign a contract extension for property cleanup to bring properties back into compliance on with Rockmore Contracting Corp. I don't, I don't know if we need the word "on" in there, into compliance. What do you think, Jim? Is that an error?
Yeah, I would say, "compliance with..."
Into, into compliance, all right, to sign a contract.
Send the title and the first whereas to...
Yeah, probably.
Want to remove both of those? Why they call it...
Yeah, let's just make it, just take the word "on" out. Other than that, I think that's fine.
Out with "on."
Yeah. Okay. John, you're next.
Town Board Resolution ID 34883, authorize the supervisor to sign a contract amendment for waste zero to supply and distribute garbage bags.
34938, authorize supervisor to sign contract extension for liquid propane gas, Starlight Propane Gas Corp. 34909, assigns contract extension for, or authorizes supervisor to sign contract extension for window decals and permits with dry stick decal. Tom, John?
Town Board Resolution ID 34926, authorize supervisor to sign contract extension with Mercury Marine for Mercury Marine parts.
Town Board Resolution 34941, authorize supervisor to sign a contract extension for printing and mailing of Hampton Bay's Water District bills with Questmark Information Management Incorporated.
34939, authorize supervisor to sign a contract extension for replacement parts for Chevrolet General Motors with Eagle Chevrolet, Inc. And, yeah.
Good. Town Board Resolution 34940, authorize the supervisor to sign a contract extension for district-wide well and pump maintenance and repair at the Hampton Bay's Water District with Delta Well and Pump Company Incorporated.
34890, authorize supervisor to sign DPP with Toshiba for copy machines from Eastern Suffolk Bosse's contract, which you're all on. I don't know why everybody's co-sponsoring these things, but...
No, no idea.
But it just sort of happened. 34, they, they're just copies?
Good, good copies.
They copied the whole Town Board on that one. All right, 34934, authorize the supervisor to execute a 2021 support agreement for MRI Software LLC, formerly known as Happy Software, Inc., for Town of Southampton Housing Authority for the Administration of Southampton Town Housing Authority, Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. Don't know why they changed their name from Happy, but not happy anymore. I guess not. 34904, authorize the supervisor to sign a 2021 agreement with Munistat Services. John, you're next.
Town Board Resolution ID 34908, award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract for closed top shelf contained ejector trailer with hydraulic roof.
Town Board Resolution 34819, award and authorize supervisor to sign contract for irrigation maintenance and repair with burn and sun irrigation incorporated.
Town Board Resolution ID 34907, award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract for private or municipal markets for the disposal and recycling services for mixed paper and corrugated cardboard.
Do you want to say anything on that? I mean, I guess we, this is to our town engineer's credit, where she's been actively soliciting better prices for disposal, and I think this is about a $40 swing, right, from what...
Roughly.
We were paying $20 a yard to get rid of this material, now we're going to get $20 a yard for the material?
Well, yeah. I mean, it's just the larger issue that we have, continuously have, and are still trying to blend our way through as recycling costs are extremely high. And where we used to make money, we don't. So a lot of credit to our town engineer, Kristen Fenton, for working hard to get these contracts, to get these monies down.
34903, awards and authorizes the supervisor to sign contract with Dominion Construction Corp. for the Southampton Animal Shelter rooftop access ladder. It's about a $50,000 job, a little bit less, 484, to fix ladder that allows access...
You said 484, but in the financial impact, it says 485.
Oh, sorry, 485.
Yeah, but up there, it says 484.
It says not to exceed 485.
Oh, okay.
I don't...
Got it.
Their bid amount was 484, not to exceed 485.
Got it.
I guess they've left some wiggle room. All right, 34933, awards and authorize supervisor to sign contract with Paul Singer Design for educational signage for the iconic estuary committee.
Actually, I'd like to be a co-sponsor of that. That's all right.
Sure. Sunday, can you add John in? John, you're next, too.
Town Board Resolution ID 34932, and I need to make a change on this. Title of 2020 Notice to Bidders for North Sea, feel like this, Supervisor, North Sea Park Pickle Mall Court. The notice to bidders has an error on this first, under notice to bidders, take notice. The date should be changed from November 19th to November 18th.
Okay?
Yep.
All right.
So, yeah, so, Sunday, you got that? Well, somebody will make a change.
Resolution ID 34929, accept donation from Hampton Bay Schools for cozy dome playground structure for Foster Avenue Park Hampton Bays.
That's great, too. And what is that, Julie? That's a...
Yes. The senior class donated, and I was going to talk about that in our updates, but, yes, the senior class, because they couldn't have prom and other events, decided to donate to the park.
That's great, so cool.
It's awesome, and I'm sure that many of them played, you know, in the park through the years, so it's, it's really great to see them, you know, donate stuff. They had a hard end of the school year, and they're doing something really great.
So we had already agreed to pay for the playground, so are they doing something beyond?
Yes, it's an extra piece of equipment.
Oh, great.
Yeah, it was an insurance.
It's a cozy dome.
It's a cozy dome?
It's a dome that you can go in and it's like a little house, but in the shape of a dome, yeah.
Nice.
Very cool.
And you're all invited tomorrow, but I'll do that at update.
That's really, that's really awesome, that the seniors...
It is.
Yeah, it is.
Yes. And we hope to have a representative of the senior class tomorrow at the dedication.
That, that's great, that they're doing something for the next generation.
Yes. 10 a.m.
Julie, do you know who the class advisors were for that?
I don't. I have it written down somewhere, I know Paul...
It'd be nice to recognize them somewhere, yeah.
Yeah.
Kristen is taking care of that, yeah.
Good.
She's going to have a little sign and then a little, a temporary sign and then a permanent sign for them.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cool. They're doing something right over there.
Yep.
For sure, at that school. 34841, amends the 2020 budget for various departments. 34842, amends 2020 through 2024 capital budget for network infrastructure.
Town Board Resolution ID 34872, co-sponsor with Councilman Skivoni to authorize disbursement from Landmarks Maintenance Funds through the Landmark Maintenance Award Program for repair and maintenance of the town landmark Josiah Foster House located at 566 Montauk Highway in East Clark.
34835, recalls and amends Town Board Resolution Number 2020-675, creating and appointing the Community Law Enforcement Review Committee. This is adding Emily Falkowski from the Legal Aid Society, East End Bureau, as a member of the committee, which, and the committee's doing great. It's really, it's really going very well. We've got a great, great group there. So that's what that resolution is doing. 34897, authorizes the town attorney to commence legal action to recover for the loss of damage to town property. It's from a motor vehicle accident. 34927, authorizes the town attorney to reimburse NYMER the deductibles for the matter of Egan Total of $100,000. 34936, accepts a donation as it relates to the North Sea Beach Colony Beach Erosion Control District. It's $1,500 donation from Peter Hammer. 34935, accepts donation from Cousins Paintball for the town's Police Department Explorer Program. And, John, you're next.
Town Board Resolution ID 34930, is a memorializing resolution to support the Assembly Bill 8.08936 and Senate Bill S.06868 as it relates to the Public Service Commission's authority to implement and enforce audit recommendations. So on this, I'd like to invite the entire Town Board. This is, this is an important piece of legislation. It's out of committee, it's waiting to be signed or presented to the Governor. And basically what it's doing is it's giving the PSC, the Public Service Commission oversight or LIPA, which it doesn't currently have, in order for us to be able to have more greater transparency. And as part of the CCA program, you've all signed on to that. I'm sorry I didn't have the opportunity to talk to each of you individually, just haven't had the opportunity to do that, so I thought I'd take advantage of that here today and ask if you would all like to sign on. I think it's an important piece of legislation, and the more support we show, the better our CCA legislation...
I'm in.
Will go.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll sign on.
I think the state of New York should be taking these steps, absolutely. I would be proud to sign on.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
There were two gentlemen here earlier, they, they didn't stay?
Yeah, unfortunately, I invited them back for next Town Board meeting, and they'll all speak in public portion, so expect a large, a large...
So these are individuals, Dieter, I think, was here.
I think Jimmy Dieter.
Maybe, yeah.
I think James Yelling was up there.
Yep, James was here.
All right, and they're from the Sustainability Committee?
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're asking for this, too?
Well, it's, you know, during the course of establishing, working on our CCA, you know, when we originally presented, we had several stages that we're going to get through. And one of the stages here, I don't know if you all know, there's a really great article written by Carl Grossman called Poison Pill, and it talks about the difficulties that the, the relationship with the PSC and LIPA, particularly the only state agency, power authority in the, in the, in the state of New York, has this, this issue that we have that we can't get, go forward on it without legislation like this allowing us to...
So the PSC regulates all the utilities, but there's some carved-out exemption for LIPA?
Yeah. It's much, it's more complicated than that, and I was hoping to, you know, bring people up to talk about it, but we can do that.
I know they have an advisory role with LIPA, they just, probably it's not mandated?
Yeah, but they have authority over other power, all the other power.
As an appointed civilian review board.
Yeah, it's a, it's a different structure altogether. It's unique to the state of New York.
And LIPA's board is not an elected board?
It's not.
It's all an appointed board, so, okay.
So we can certainly talk about it more, you know, sit down, I didn't want to waste the board's time, but we can sit down and give you a lot more detail, or you can hear it for yourselves, I'm sure we'll hear it at the next Town Board meeting with our, with people coming to speak in public portion. So thank you all, thank you for your support on this thing.
Councilman Mortel.
So I think everybody's on it?
Yep.
All right. All right, so 34898, resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an application with the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, together with Nancy and David Lopez, for a subdivision lot line modification. Is this part of a CPF?
Yeah, sure.
It's 31.7 acres or 40 acres? Or we, we did, we authorized the acquisition of 40 acres. But there's, I guess, two sellers? I'm not really sure, clear what's going on? Or is it an adjacent parcel?
They're probably subdividing off and selling us a part of it, so we're part of the...
I see, carve out.
Yeah, we're buying a part of the...
We're buying a part, we're buying, I guess, 31, we're buying roughly 32 acres of the 40.
Of the 40.
Right, so we're part of the application.
Right. So we can't close on our portion until the lot, the line has been created?
That's correct.
Okay, got it.
I guess it's doing it the right way.
Three, yeah.
Yeah.
34364, accepts retirement of John Washabow, labor crew leader in Highway. 34912, appoints Matthew Curti to maintenance mechanic one position in Parks. 34910, appoints Tom McCaffrey to maintenance mechanic two position in Parks Department. 34846 is a notice of public hearing regarding property maintenance conditions at 215 Long
Town Board Resolution 34916, co-sponsor with Councilwoman Lobstad and Supervisor Schneiderman, notice of public hearing for the proposed recipients... Is that spelled, yeah, spelled correctly. Proposed recipients of the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Oh, good. We're going to get a list?
Yep.
Of those recipients? Okay, 34847 is a notice of public hearing on the acquisition of interests in lands of iconic land trust, has contract vendee in Eastport, and amends the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include that property.
I'd like to co-sponsor that.
Sure.
Supervisor, if that's all right.
So that hearing will be held Tuesday, November 10th? And it joins other lands where we have the development rights?
Yeah, it's with the iconic land trust, it's a, it's right off of North Bay Avenue, up down North Bay Avenue, I believe.
Right. If it doesn't adjoin, it's certainly...
It's one across, and then there's, they, they bought some of the other land as well, so it seems like a real logical thing.
Right. They're trying to preserve a larger block of agriculture in the area.
The ID number, John?
Is 34847. Thank you, Tom.
And John, you're, you got the next one here.
Okay. Town Board Resolution ID 34863, the notice of public hearing to accept a deed of residual fee from Blair K. Gaza for the property to be maintained as open space located in East Clark pursuant to Southampton Town Code 244-4, obtaining a development rights certificate and Chapter 247 general municipal law of the state of New York. Town Board Resolution ID 34862, notice of public hearing to accept a deed of residual fee from Blair K. Gaza for property to be maintained as open space located at West Hampton pursuant to Southampton Town Code 244-4, obtaining a development rights certificate and Chapter 247 general municipal law of the state of New York. Town Board Resolution 34833, is a notice of public hearing to accept a deed of residual fee from Rosemary Grau Edel for properties to be maintained as open space located at West Hampton pursuant to Southampton Town Code Chapter 244-4, obtaining a development rights certificate and Chapter 247 general municipal law of the state of New York. Town Board Resolution ID 34834, notice of public hearing to accept a quick claim deed from Rosemary Grau Edel for properties to be maintained as open space located in West Hampton pursuant to Chapter 247 general municipal law of the state of New York. Town Board Resolution ID 34901, is a notice of public hearing to accept a deed of residual fee from Joseph F. Gaza for property to be maintained as open space located at North Sea pursuant to Southampton Town Code 244-4, obtaining a development rights certificate and Chapter 247 general municipal law of the state of New York. Town Board Resolution 34895, notice of public hearing to accept the TDR grant for conservation easement from Blair K. Gaza for property to be maintained as open space located at West Hampton, Suffolk County Tax MAP 900-329-1-4.1, pursuant to Southampton Town Code Chapter 244-4, obtaining a development rights certificate and Chapter 247 general municipal law of the state of New York. And if that wasn't enough, Town Board Resolution ID 34822, a notice of public hearing to consider the acceptance of a grant of conservation easement in connection with the application of the Southampton Country Day Camp in North Sea. Town Board Resolution ID 34892, is a notice of public hearing to consider the grant of conservation easement in connection with the subdivision map of Mohawk Halsey LLC Water Mall.
You could keep going, no, I'll read the next one. You're on the roll.
That was my coronavirus test.
34931, notice of public hearing for 2021 fire protection contracts. 34887 is a notice of public hearing on the acquisition of lands of Edwards at Albert Hampton and amend CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include that property. Well, John, you're next again. Oh, you're not done?
I guess not. Town Board Resolution ID 34659, accept a grant of conservation easement from Big Sky LLC for property to be maintained as open space located at North Sea pursuant to Southampton Town Code Chapter 244-4, obtaining a development rights certificate and Chapter 247 general municipal law of the state of New York.
All right, then we have a couple more outside of that packet. Outside of that packet, we've got docket ID 34828. And do we, are we gonna, we're gonna change, we should change the, shouldn't we change it to a resolution number format? I guess not. Doesn't matter?
Where are you?
Last, accept retirement.
Yeah.
Add-ons.
Okay, so I...
34828.
34828, I guess we'll get a regular number.
It's a resolution?
Accepts retirement of Diane Van Slight, Principal Assessment Clerk in the Tax Receiver's Office.
I'm sorry, you asked if it should be changed to...
Oh, no, I guess they all just have ID numbers.
They all have ID numbers until you wrap. Then we go downstairs and we work some magic and it assigns...
Right. They get their number.
The numbers in the order that it should be.
Got it. Right. And then, and I, let me just take a look at that. And 34947 authorize the supervisor to sign any and all documents with New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for Brownfield Cleanup Program. This must be the Damascus Road landfill. Yep.
Mm-hmm. That's at 70.
I'm still in discussion. Why, this is fine, we can pass that resolution, but I've been asking the D.C. to waive the fees or reduce the fees. So hopefully, I'll be successful. All right, any questions about anything?
No, but Sunday, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. Okay, Supervisor Schneiderman, this is the Fire Protection District contracts. We have three fire protection districts. It's just a public hearing notice. 34931, page 48. 48. I'll be quicker next time.
Got it.
All right, any other? You know, I, Sunday, I wouldn't mind being added on to the resolution. I could do it on the floor, though, the one that John read about going out to bid for the pickleball courts out in...
I was wondering when that would catch up.
Been thinking about the pickleball courts, huh?
Yeah. Whenever, wherever, if you want to find, it doesn't matter, I could do it, I could do it on the, I could do it on the floor, too.
Now, hold on, we'll find it, because we'd rather do it during the draft's agenda.
It's not, you know, it's, it's no joke.
No, I pointed you out when I first read it.
I was in much better shape before the pandemic.
Absolutely. I think we all were.
We're going to add you, it's on page 23.
And actually, I thought these courts were going to be constructed for this, this spring that passed, but it got delayed. It got delayed by the pandemic. What page is it on?
23.
23.
Oh, 20. Oh, yes. Yep, I know there's a lot of people excited about that. All right, anything else?
Well, I just, we're doing updates?
Yeah, we'll do updates next. But anything else on the agenda, the draft agenda? Okay, so that's good. Yeah, we'll do updates. Julie, you want to go?
Sure. Well, we kind of touched on both of my issues. One was the Southampton Schinacock Hills Takahoe CAC. Not only did Star present and did a great job, I thought. Also, Diana Weir came and spoke with them on the second half of the meeting. Unfortunately, I was not able to be there, but Councilman Sciovanni was there. And I, I've heard through the grapevine that it was a very good meeting and they were...
True form, Diana Weir was a fountain of information, and people really appreciated the clarity that she brought to the group in the meeting on the subject of housing and affordable housing and the town's efforts moving forward.
Yep. So that was good. And just one more time for the ribbon cutting tomorrow, Friday, October 9th, at 10:00 AM at Foster Avenue Park. Ribbon cutting for the community. We're going to socially distance, please wear your mask, physically distance, please wear your mask. I'm very excited, so I hope you'll all come, and if you can't, then you'll be there in spirit, I'm sure.
I'll be there.
Yeah. I'm going to try to be there, too.
Okay.
Anything else?
I want to see the cozy house. When does that come?
Cozy dome.
Cozy dome.
Cozy dome.
I'll ask Kristen. Not for tomorrow, but it'll be there.
Tommy John, how about you?
That is so cool. They did such a wonderful...
Not at this time.
I'm good. Thank you.
John, you're good. Rick, I know you've been busy cleaning up the town.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a thank you to everybody who came out this past weekend. We had a beautiful weekend. We had over 500 volunteers, almost 23 tons of debris was picked up, plus a couple dozen tires. The great thing was there were several other cleanups at the same time. So even though we might have been down a little bit, I think in comparison, we picked up more garbage than we ever have. It was great to see the mix of some young people, some different organizations, our Rotary Clubs, you know, our communities have been broken down into little streets and beaches now, and because of the pandemic, and they all came out, you know, clean up their areas. Ducks Unlimited did a great job. They got to spend some time with Councilman Sciovanni out in Bridgehampton, cleaning up the...
Long Pond Greenbelt.
There you go. It was a wonderful event. I'm already looking forward to April.
I saw a lot of volunteers out there, and I have to say, very diverse group of people, multicultural, you know, everybody contributing. It's great to see, and I know the beaches are looking great right now, because of all the garbage that got picked up, so...
Exactly. I think we've put, we've put that seed into people now, and, you know, with the addition of the baskets, we're putting on all the beaches and all that, I think it's going to become the norm that we carry out more than we carry in, so it's going to be great.
Long Island divers went out, and they, the Divers Association, they cleaned up underwater. They did a dive cleanup of garbage, and I think they cleaned up the bridge, too. There's a lot of, I guess, the fishermen go up there and they leave stuff behind and maybe others as well, but they removed a lot of waste, too. So it's a great effort.
Well, you know, to that point, to that point, we have, I've asked for a work session on balloon ban, you know, that we did the survey on. That was really, survey was overwhelmingly in favor of getting rid of balloons, which make up a large part of the cleanup and the mess that we're, we deal with on a daily, on a daily basis on the beaches and marine life. So we're going to ask them to come back and show us some progress on where they're at with that and bring that, bring that subject up again. I think it's important and timely.
That was a big concern, the Cornell Cooperative Extension. We stopped, and they were having some hands-on classes, and in the discussion that we were having, the balloons were number one.
Yep.
Really?
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's, you know, if you dive, you also see the effects of balloons on marine life, you know? It's not, it's really not, it's almost common to see an animal or a fish wrapped up in string or...
I still see them on the beach, still see them balloons, yeah. Okay, so that's, you'll be raising that again or floating that idea?
I'm floating that idea, yeah. I'm not going to let go of it.
Is that more hot air?
More hot air.
All right. Not going to burst your balloon.
No, okay, thanks.
All right. All right, any other updates? Let's see, we've got, there's Emergency Nurses Week next week, and we'll be lighting the Big Duck in purple in honor of emergency nurses who've been on the front line in the battle against the pandemic. There's a small event planned next Wednesday at 5:30 with social distancing to thank them for their dedication. There'll be some representatives from the Nurses Association, and we may see County Executive Steve Bologna there, and I know there's an invitation out to him as well as Assemblyman Thiel, so we're hoping that they will be able to make it. So you guys are all welcome to join us 5:30 at the Big Duck. And National Night Out was held last, this, this past Tuesday, just this week, at Red Creek Park in Hampton Bays. Apparently, a good turnout, was not able to attend. It had been postponed from August because of the pandemic, but they were able to hold it with social distancing. And National Night Out is to support the police, right? Police Department. Were any of you able to get there?
Not, I had scalped.
It's police supporting the community, I think.
Police supporting the community.
It's, we usually attend those every year.
Yeah, it's, it's a nice, it's a nice thing.
It is a really great thing.
Just builds that community relationship between the police and, and the community.
Lots of young kids this year.
Oh, good. And they have, they have stuff for the kids, right?
Well, they fly the drones.
Yeah, they show you everything.
Nice.
It's a lot of fun.
I have a note here, absentee ballots are, are going out. If you applied for one, you may have already received it. Make sure you fill it out correctly, send it back. They must be postmarked by Election Day. You can still request an absentee ballot through November 27th. There's information on the town's website.
October?
Early voting begins October 24th. There's only one location on the South Fork. It's at the Stony Brook Southampton Campus, the old gym building. I guess that's Takahoe Road?
Yeah, it's right on the corner there where the gym is, right at the light.
And, and we'll have information on our website for days, days and hours of operation for that.
Jay, I think you need to clarify. I think that you said November 27th, where it should be October 27th for something?
You can still request an absentee ballot through October 27.
That's it.
And you can also...
Early voting begins October 24th.
Yeah.
Did I say November 24th?
Yeah, you said November something.
Okay, I, I might have read that.
And you can vote it, you can early vote at any one of the municipalities, so you don't, you don't...
Right, any of the early voting sites. It doesn't have to be the one within the town that you're at.
In Suffolk County.
In Suffolk County.
In Suffolk County. Let's see. Is it, and Tommy John, the census is done?
No, there was a court case, and it's been extended to October 30th.
Oh, good.
So, fill out for the reasons that we've...
Can't say it enough.
Well, it's, gosh, it's so important. It lasts a decade.
All right, any, anything else? Anybody else? All right, hearing, no other business, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Bovia. All in favor?
Aye.[1786.04]